First morning, we're sitting on our line.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the in-depth meeting of the Muscatine City Council for June 9th, 2016. Fran, will you please do the roll call?
Housewives Raywall, Gerald.
Present.
Nat Sig.
Present.
Posero.
Present.
Feinam.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Fred.
Present.
Six present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, Fran. We have a very short agenda tonight. We're going to move on to the hotel site plan review. Jim or Randy, who's going to start? Thank you, Jim.
Just in case there's any doubt, I'm starting tonight.
All right.
Mayor, council, what I would like to talk with you tonight and discuss with you are two items that in the site plan review process have become, are very apparent that they need to be dealt with separately and brought to the council and hopefully approved so that this real estate type transaction can go through the necessary steps. Don't ask me to repeat what those steps are because I don't believe I know what they all are. But they have to do with a lease of public right-of-way for Mississippi Drive and at least now what's conceptualized as an agreement on how Chestnut Street that's adjacent to the hotel will work on the site plan. So... And this should parallel the handout that I gave you, but if you want to look up on the screen or if you look at those notes that I gave you, just to orient you to that map, obviously the gray square that's there is the new hotel, Merrill Hotel, and to the left of that is going to be Chestnut and obviously to the bottom of that is Mississippi Drive. And if you look on the handout or on that screen, you'll see that there's a fairly good-sized yellow rectangle on there. So are you guys all with me where we're at? All right. So that is a two-lane drop-off area for the front of the hotel. And for most of it, because the front of the hotel actually comes to the edge of the property line, that drop-off area will exist on public right-of-way. That has been something that's been discussed, negotiated. I think the city has probably asked every question that's possible to ask about can it be narrower, can the sidewalks be narrower, can we do something else? That just seems like an awful lot of ground. And what the staff came to the conclusion is, is that for this hotel to be the high-class, high-rated, first-class, maybe I shouldn't say high-class, I should say first-class facility that the owners want it to be, that that two-lane drop-off was an absolute necessity. And so we got to work as to how it would be possible to do that. And the idea that is being presented in front of you today is that that would probably be a lease agreement that would allow the hotel the use of that space. Now, that has already been looked at by the designers of the Mississippi River Drive corridor. All of that, as you can see shown there, can be incorporated into that design and the corridor can still work. Just want to check my notes for a second. Because what I also want to say about it is that I said the term of that lease, or it would be a very long-term lease, that the Mississippi Drive can accommodate this area in the plan. And that is also the area that the city has committed to providing access to for the hotel when the hotel opens. So that is the first part. The lease of the Mississippi Drive corridor or the right-of-way to accommodate that two-lane drop-off. Now, if you look to the left, you'll find another yellow figure with blue inside of it. And then there's a red rectangle to the left of that. One of the things that was discussed many, many times, the hotel had a very strong desire, they felt that it was the right thing to do and what was best for the hotel, to bring that traffic off of that two-lane drop-off area and have it be able to come right out onto Chestnut with access directly to Mississippi Drive. The city staff didn't exactly see the eye-to-eye on that. And through multiple iterations and negotiations and discussions, what you see there is the final, what I certainly certainly hope is the final iteration on that, is that that two lanes of traffic that come across in front of the hotel will turn to the right and be directed up Chestnut Street. And to do that and to transition down to one lane and also still provide a parking area, maybe a secondary drop-off place there for the door that's on the side of the hotel, and also still provide for two lanes of traffic on Chestnut, there's about a 10- to 12-foot wide piece of right-of-way, and that's what that red triangle, red rectangle, red rectangle is. That would be private property that would be dedicated to the city for, as public right-of-way, so that that street could waggle or move or offset and come down there. And there still would be room to accommodate that traffic coming out of the hotel. I believe what was discussed there is that for that area that's in yellow, what needs to be executed is just some sort of memo of understanding or agreement with the hotel so that it's clear the responsibilities for that area. One of the things that I think makes sense to me, but just because it makes sense to me doesn't mean it makes sense to anybody else, but that these areas would certainly be the hotel's responsibility to do snow removal on and things like that. But a memo of understanding would clarify all of that. And private utilities that might exist in those two areas, how those get dealt with, because there are going to be some of those things too, and that there's going to be public utilities within those easements. So we still need to have rights of access to come back in and get to those. Oh, I know what I wanted to say, yes. Thank you for that little bit of time. One of the things that was in the compromise, actually, there were two things that were in the compromise. For special events where there would be large numbers of people coming and going to that hotel, the hotel submitted a special events traffic plan. And for those events where it would make a lot of sense with a lot of traffic coming there to be able to get them out to Mississippi Drive, the hotel would execute a specific special event traffic plan. It's not a complicated document. I don't think it is a big-money thing. It really kind of boils down to the fact that you would have police officers hired to direct traffic at where the two lanes of traffic at the drop-off come out and down at the intersection of Chestnut and Mississippi Drive. And that way, those could be controlled and traffic could be outlet. But the day-to-day operations outside of special events would function like I described to you. You would turn right and go up Chestnut.
The red, there's the blue line or the blue area where the two lanes coming through.
Yep.
You've got the red dashed and then over on the corner, it's red. Is that just painting or is there actually, is that a barrier?
The red next to the blue?
Where it goes around the corner.
Right, where it goes around the blue.
Yeah, where it goes up and around the corner.
Yes, that actually is envisioned to be some sort of barrier, but not like a barrier curve, maybe like a demountable narrow little island or something, that it could be clearly delineate that you're not supposed to run over it. And those details have not been exactly hammered down, but it will be some sort of visible.
Because I could see somebody coming across in front of the hotel and then cutting out.
I could see that too, but...
Without having some raised barrier.
Right, but we don't...
This would be more like what's done on the Sampson Street Grandview corner? There's that raised with the rumble.
Yeah, with the rumble strips on it. No, I don't really envision that. I would think it would be a little bit more mature to get over that. But we need something there also that when the special event occurs, that you can do exactly that. When the special event is there and the police are there to direct the traffic, you're going to want to be able to let that traffic roll over the top of it so it can't be too big.
Or perhaps get a fire truck through there. Well, I can see a fire truck going where my Miata wouldn't.
Yeah. So...
Some speed humps caused me grief.
Okay, so there are no other questions and we can ask, you guys can ask questions anytime. I want to try to just boil this down to two things because it is my understanding that next council meeting, there will be two things coming at you guys for decisions. As one is to whether, one is to approve that lease of the Mississippi Drive public right-of-way to accommodate that two-lane drop-off and one to approve that agreement for how Chestnut Street is going to work there. And I don't really know, I just had this thought, so excuse me if this is not the right way to do it, but I guess what I was hoping for, well, let me get to that next. Let me finish going through the slide real quick. So just to review, Mississippi Drive is a lease. Obviously, it to be finished prepared once we get done here and ready for a meeting next week. Obviously, it will allow public utilities in that area. It defines the responsibilities for the public and private infrastructure that's in that leased area. Mississippi Drive can be designed to accommodate that drop-off and the vertical differences that will exist. And the hotel is responsible for snow removal in this area and the exit area that's on Chestnut. That's the vision so far. One more slide. Just to summarize, Chestnut Street, 10- to 12-foot dedication right-of-way from the west side of the street. And the agreement for use of the public right-of-way for that, I'd call it a drop-off area, but where that traffic exits. The rest of those are the same, defined responsibility for the infrastructure in the agreement area and the Mississippi Drive can, designed can accommodate these things that are necessary for the hotel. So...
Jim?
Is it, yeah.
Can I go back to that slide real quick?
What do you want to go back to?
One you had before.
A map.
A map.
Map.
Chestnut realignment.
Here we go.
So basically, you're saying that the blue area is what we want to give up, in a sense, what you're asking, correct?
One of these.
Well, yeah, I mean, there would be an agreement that would cover that blue area that's covered with the yellow going around it. Santos, is that what you're asking?
The one in the front.
Okay, let's go back one more. So that area.
Well, that was in the yellow, yeah.
That yellow.
Okay, yes, that would, what is envisioned is a lease that would lease that property to the hotel for a long time.
So why does it have to be two-lane?
It has everything, and again, I did say we did ask every question we could possibly think of, and that was one of them. And I can give my best answer for that. There might be some people here from the hotel that would have just as good an answer or maybe even better. But that hotel is envisioned to have a certain rating. You know, you go to a hotel or a resort or anything and it has a five diamond rating or a four diamond rating or a five apple rating or things like that.
I'm just, I'm asking you the question.
And I'm getting to it, I'm getting to it. So in the requirements for this hotel to be the hotel that has the rating that they want this hotel to have, it requires a two-lane drop-off.
That way you can pull up, stop.
Pull up, stop, other traffic can still get around you. Yes.
No honking and...
It actually, from a standpoint of just my own personal view of that, is I think it has an awful lot to do with safety and an awful lot to do with emergency access and exit and all sorts of things I think are important for that.
I'm just looking at 23 feet wide and then I come back over and I see 14 feet wide for the actual traffic. And then we come over on the, further up, and you'll see 12 and then 18. So we're basically cutting that road in between and then we're putting that barrier in between given vehicles. And you start talking about, let's say we bring a wide load of some sort that's trying to get across and we limit that to our traffic because we are, I mean, we're not given that much room. And I'm asking, that's what they're asking for.
Yes, yes.
That's what the hotel is asking.
And maybe to address that fear about something that would be run through there that might be a wide load.
We'd be losing permits that would have to go outside of the city for people that would probably be traveling. So it depends on what kind of loads we're getting or if somebody's trying to move something big.
Most of the wide load permits, we don't issue wide load permits, but most of those...
They go through the state.
Well, yeah, they go through the state and the county issues them too, but we do get advised of it and we do check the route. But since I've been here, I haven't seen one of them go through downtown. They avoid it like the plague, to be honest. But if they did, have to go through there. That median, the green space that's there
Yes.
is not envisioned to be something that would get in the way of that. I mean, you would be able to roll over a portion of that median too.
That's not going to be like the pink, that's going to be a barrier.
It will be something that certainly you could roll the wheel of a truck up and over if you had to. You're not going to want to. It's probably like a slope face, 12-inch slope face curve that probably goes up five or six inches. If you're going slow, you can roll right up and over the top of it. If you're going fast, you're not going to be able to.
One thing this plan assumes is that Mississippi Drive is going to be designed and built in a certain configuration. And I don't necessarily agree with what's being proposed is what I would vote for.
Okay.
I'm not in favor of anything less than a four-lane Mississippi Drive.
Okay.
The road behind the Merrill, do we know, I mean, are we changing that at all? Is that going to still be whatever width that we have there? Because it's not numbered. I see everything else has numbers on it. Well, no, not Second Street. Actually, Alley.
The alley.
Because it looks like we're going two ways on that one, but I don't know if I'm...
Well, I mean, that is just to indicate that...
That's going to stay what it is right now, whatever it is.
Yeah, that will not get any narrower.
I don't know what it is right now.
The red box on Chestnut, that's, is that at the present time, private property?
Yes, yes.
And a deal has been struck between the property owner and the city?
It's them.
They own the property.
I want to get to the word struck. I mean, that's what was discussed and is in essence an agreement. Has the thing actually happened? Has the transfer of right-of-way actually happened? No. That's just, that's just what the plan is.
Deal has been made.
How many feet long is this, Jim? The yellow at the bottom?
So the one that goes in front?
Right.
Am I seeing that right? How many? How many feet long is that?
It's 23 wide, right?
200 plus probably.
How long is the front of the hotel? Twenty...
What's the city, the city blocks?
150, it's what, half of a city block is what it is.
Like that, so you're 120 feet.
I bet it's 200 feet probably.
Well, but from here, you're more, you're two-thirds of the quarters, so 200 feet of from yellow.
I would guess more like 350?
You're talking the whole, not just...
Yeah, the whole yellow.
I'm guessing, I'm waiting for Adam. I'm buying time for Adam, didn't. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Off the face of the building, okay.
So when you talk about snow removal, are you talking that the hotel will push it off to a side to where the city can get it? When they're doing the downtown or is this for them?
I had not given that any thought, honestly. I mean, I think the responsibility would be for them to clear their streets, but like I do with my, pardon my driveway, I just push it out in the street, so I don't know.
You don't. We can't do that.
We're going to send, rewind that, rewind that.
We're going to send some guys over to your bill. You blow it out there.
I believe, no, 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 no. I believe that if we stated that that would be the responsibility of the hotel to remove, that they would remove it and take care of it. I don't think we would have any problems there. I'm not anticipating that. To be honest, that's kind of the least of my concern.
I just question.
So you said that you guys had already worked together with the hotel and this was your best opinion, Jim, as far as the buffer being the 23 feet?
As far as the buffer...
That you guys have communicated as a group together and...
I believe that that represents, this is not the time to be funny, so I will just say this is the time, this represents the best negotiated settlement to accomplish what absolutely has to be accomplished and still maintain what we need out there for Mississippi Drive and to address the emergency and safety concerns that existed on Chestnut with the exit the way it was originally proposed. But it's a negotiation, so you give a little and you try to take a little. And what I really wanted to try to point out was that, you know, the two-lane drop, or one of the things I want to point out is that that two-lane drop-off in front of the hotel was important to the hotel. And we have a two-lane drop-off in front of the hotel. Going around the side of that, the hotel really wanted to have that exit directly onto Chestnut and directly out onto Mississippi Drive, but we did not exactly see eye-to-eye on that. And we worked pretty hard and we had the necessary discussions. And we came up with a compromise there that fits a heck of a lot better for the city's needs and still hopefully meets the needs that the hotel has. And so that's why there's the special event plan, to still be able to accommodate that access out onto Mississippi Drive.
I'm surprised these issues haven't been discussed with council prior to breaking ground.
I can't address that either.
No, you can't. There's a lot of footnotes noted on these two drawings. Can I get a copy of what the footnotes are?
Yes, absolutely. The intent there was to never try to convey the stuff that's on there. You guys can all have 11-by-17 copies of it if you want.
Thank you.
Color or black and white? Color.
I'm okay. Around the left.
As long as we know, I mean, because I can see it says note nine, I think. I don't know what, I'd like to know what.
Yeah, and a lot of that, if you're looking at the
That's your sheet.
The black and white ones, or that's that one?
This one.
That one just is, that one just has a lot of notes on it. The one you have in your hand has a lot of notes on it about there's property that's leased that has parking and then there's some parking that is, so it has a lot of stuff on it about parking and who is going to be responsible for what area and things like that.
On a larger paper, I could probably read the print, but otherwise I need a...
We will get you all color. 11-by-17 is my bad.
We're fine, we're fine. So further down at the very bottom, left-hand side on that area of Mississippi of the drive that you're requesting for lease. So if we keep it 14, you already had it intended to stay 14 here. So this was already going to be 14 here. This is going to be obviously, this is going to stay 14 already then?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then these are probably just facing the wrong way, right? Because there's obviously the wrong direction. The cars are all parked in the wrong way?
First of all, let me address the 14, now that I'm back here where I belong. Yes, the 14-foot is intended to continue through. The parking is not backwards. That was one of the things that was discussed at a couple of meetings. That is back-in diagonal parking.
But that was presented.
Yes.
But there's no definitive answer.
Nothing's been approved.
Nothing's been approved.
Yeah, well, obviously, there is a lot of things that are still to go on this.
I know.
But, and I want to emphasize this as hard as I can, this lease is going to take some time to run through the steps it needs to go through. And this agreement are going to need some time to go through those necessary steps to get approval. I don't know whether it has to go through public hearings and stuff like that, but I think it does. And so these two things were chosen to get them going. And that's why I'm here.
Sorry, go ahead.
And if they, if we're looking at public hearings and readings and so forth, we can, if council is in agreement, rather than going through the three readings, we can suspend the rules and approve it on the first one if we want, as long as, I would say, if council was almost unanimous in the approval. My, right now, we're just talking about the lease on Mississippi Drive and then Chestnut.
And an agreement that would cover how Chestnut was going to work, yes.
But then any other associated
Things that are on that plan are...
Something or others that are, that were not approved.
No, no, that's why the title...
Well, I want to, I want to make sure we, that's, that's what we're saying, clear.
That's why the title in the first sheet, just specifically...
I don't want to have it come back to us and say, well, you guys approved that, this backing end concept, you know, uh-uh.
Okay, that I understand.
I'm 100% on that one, but I don't think I'm totally off. How long is the lease, Jim?
I don't know that it, it could be anything that the council so desires. I just threw out there 99 because I know that's considered to be a very long-term lease, 99-year leases.
Is that normal?
We have, we have a lease that
75 years.
On the parking lot across the street with Central State Bank for 75 years from the time we did.
I might not make it that far.
For sure.
No, that's fine. I don't know if it was like a 10-year thing or we do and say, hey, you know what, after 10 years, they were great, we renew it.
And, uh...
Or if we do fifty years.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's all to the, to the council's desire and pleasure as to what they would want to do. I was just merely trying to point out as, as plainly as I could, that, that, that the hotel's desire there is for a long-term lease that would assure them that something wouldn't happen to take away their front door. And if you, you know, I, I can definitely tell you that if I were them, ten years, too short. Twenty-five years, I'm still thinking, I'm, you know, it's so, I just...
Well, the last thing you wanna do is put a barrier on the project, so that you think ten years down the road, we're gonna review this. You don't wanna do that.
No. I, I, I couldn't agree more.
They don't want us to do that.
You don't, you guys don't wanna do it either, I don't think.
At seventy-five years, I'm gone. Maybe.
So, so, to, to, to try to bring this back around, I guess what I really would need to know, and whether we can do is show hands or whatever is appropriate, but, you know, are, are, are we on the right track? Do we bring these agreements to you guys next week? And clearly make it so that you rea- so that it's clear without any doubt that it is just the lease and just the agreement that is being dealt with here.
Jim, I had some questions on, on the width that it's, that Mississippi Drive is gonna be then? Is that, this is narrower than what it is right now, right?
Uh, yes, it would be narrower than it is right now, right in front of the hotel, yes.
So, if it, if the agreement is to keep it wider at other areas, then we're gonna have some kind of a bottleneck going through that area?
Um, you would have some transitions that would bring it back and into the, a little bit wider configuration, but I, I... The ones that I have seen so far are so gentle that I don't know that most drivers, I don't think, would even perceive that they were moving a lot. It's not gonna be like a curve or a hard turn or anything else. We, we wanted to avoid that at all costs, because the snowplows, especially where there's anything like a little, even a demountable curb or anything else, if it isn't on the straight tangent, if there's a relatively quick curve or anything out there, the, the snowplow drivers tend to just keep going straight and hit the curb really hard and break the curb, so... The transitions out there are really gentle.
I'm just thinking, I know we've been working on trying to make everything smooth everywhere, and everything to flow smoothly, and if we're creating a new bottleneck, that might be something to think about as well.
Okay.
One of the precepts that Dan Burden and his group are espousing though, is to slow, you know, for merchants and, and for the complete streets concept and all this kind of stuff, so it's really consistent with that.
So, real, real quick, I just make sure that I'm understanding, and I'm, and I'm not trying to, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay, so if they cut off on that blue, the blue?
Which, which one are you looking at though?
They're in front of the hotel. They turn off onto there, and then they make the turn over on Chestnut. Here. Does that just go straight, or does that go into the hotel, or some slot?
This just releases him onto the street.
Right back on the Chestnut. So if somebody accidentally says, oh, I didn't wanna get in there...
They can come around on the...
They can still come around, and if, if somebody wants to just, instead of turning in here, making this wide turn, they still can do that through the hotel?
City in, what turn?
So, let's just say somebody's driving down this road, and they're just...
Right here.
They're right here. They're coming through here, they can just turn and still get back onto Chestnut? Don't you think that's gonna be like a shortcut for people?
They would, they would be coming down here.
They can go shopping down there.
This side and they'd be there, and that would push them on around.
So what I'm getting at is if somebody's driving down here, they get in here. They can turn right here, still turn right here, right?
Yes. Yeah, those two lanes would transition together in one lane right there.
So then if somebody accidentally didn't wanna be on that turn and didn't wanna go to the hotel, they could still get back out.
Yeah, oh yeah, 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 yes. I see what you're saying, Senator.
So I can see where, I can see what...
Jim, uh, per, per your map, that there's only one sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Um, are you looking for a sidewalk on the other side of Mississippi Drive?
I'm, uh, looking at Mississippi Drive, correct?
I believe there is gonna be sidewalks on both sides of the street there. Again, I don't want you to read too much detail into the plans there. I mean, that is a...
Other than what you're focusing on right now, you mean?
Right, right. It's, it's a nice picture. It's more than a nice picture. It shows everything that we wanted to try to address on how traffic was gonna do, and it was, it's well-prepared and put together, thank you, Adam. And, uh, um, it, it, it shows everything, but it, it is just to convey the picture to everybody that was involved in the negotiations on the rev- review of the site plan and, and everybody else, that, okay, this is how this could work.
Jim, how did you get involved in this as a city engineer and proposing this to us when we haven't finalized the Mississippi Drive design yet?
It, um, I am part of the site plan review group, so...
But you're making some assumptions that the council's gonna approve the design.
True.
That's irritating.
I, I see, I see no other way to answer that other than that, yes. The, the, the hope, I guess, was...
We haven't even seen the final design yet, and this is assuming the final design's gonna be approved.
True.
In fact, I guess, next, on the twenty-first, it's the preliminary final design.
Yes, and there's a public, public input there, and then after that, I believe in July, July... Anybody got that date? July fourteenth, or July, early July? It comes to you guys for a presentation.
Did the site plan review okay them building on a zero lot line?
That was part of the building permit?
Consistent with the downtown area.
Yes.
Yeah.
You would have to ask building and zoning about that question. I do not know the details of the permit.
You're no longer on that board.
True, but it is something that's allowed there.
It may be allowed, but the look of what it's, they're asking the city to do in order to accommodate it.
I have a question.
Sure.
We have, we have lanes here of sixteen or eighteen, and then a twelve-foot turn lane, and then fourteen going to the south end. What are the lanes on Park Avenue? That four lane, are those like twelve each?
No. Park Avenue?
Yeah.
Well, they're four lanes, but I mean...
I think, I think they're tens. The, the four lane, it seems so narrow that you're running down the curb line when you're on the outside, yeah. I, I honestly, I don't know, but I've always thought they were tens.
Okay. So the four, the fourteen's not a prob- in my opinion, the fourteen wouldn't be a problem. If, if that, where it says note six, which is where they're coming out of the, the underground garage, basically?
Yes.
Making that bend. That green, the green bar, which is green space, I'm assuming, there's some, is it just curb with concrete in the middle, or is it gonna be a little more decorative?
It is, it, there aren't, there aren't even those sorts of details to it, Councilman Fitzgerald. I'm not sure we even know those sorts of details. I, I can tell you that the color is green, I cannot tell you it's gonna be grass.
How wide is it?
How wide is...
If it's there, I can't tell.
I, I wanna make sure I'm gonna tell you about the right thing. You're talking about the narrow one that's in front of the hotel, not the wider one that's right up adjacent to the old hotel, to the condos there.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is, is that area could be narrowed, still have a, a definite separation, but be narrowed to give a little more room for Mississippi Drive, another foot.
You're right. What, um...
Median strip, or whatever you wanna, that green, green area, it's wider down here at this end.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
Iowa than it is at Chestnut.
Yes. What, yes, yes, absolutely.
But you don't want it so narrow that it's nonexistent.
Yeah, I mean, you still wanna have something out there that might provide a refuge for a pedestrian.
Yeah, yeah.
And, one of the other things that I did leave out, that I think maybe is important, and I don't know how to do this other than just run over and point at it, so I'm gonna do that.
Right here. Yeah. I may have a dumb question for you, but can you enlarge this, the view of the screen? We don't need to see second, Second Street? Or is that asking too much?
It's a, it's a picture that's embedded into a PowerPoint. I don't know that I can...
Okay, forget it.
If I just had the picture, I thought I could do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Put it on my phone and blow it up, you know? That...
Can't expand the PowerPoint?
I don't, if you can, I don't know how. How's that? I really don't know how.
Fair.
That area where there's a exit out of the underground parking for the Pearlview condos?
Yep.
That was, uh, again, something that, that was not really seen eye to eye on and, and negotiated, et cetera, et cetera, because they felt that they wanted to be able to have access out of there to be able to turn right onto Mississippi Drive. And so that, that, that green island there that has the note five white space in it?
Yeah.
Is, is included in there to more clearly delineate the one lane of traffic that it takes to get into the hotel, and still provide a little bit of a refuge in there for a car to pull out, sit there for a little bit and get a good read on traffic coming from the left, uh, so that they can turn right. We originally just said we really don't want that, but again, when you deal with these things, there are always negotiations and always things that, um, might be a little different than the perfect world.
So they're always going to be coming out of that underground parking and going to the, toward the south end?
Um, yes, cause you don't wanna them jumping the median there.
Toward Chestnut?
Yes, towards Chestnut, yes.
They will not be able to go back the other direction?
No, that's not the intent.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, not according to this, okay.
Yep.
Just, just, just clarification.
Is there any other intersection in town where we encourage making U-turns at the intersection?
Put a roundabout.
I, I don't know, I don't know of any. But again...
Don't give them any ideas. Saying you wanna know where's a U-turn.
I don't know of any, but again, that is all part of, uh, of things that were discussed, and, uh, and, and basically compromised on by not only the city, but also by the hotel. Running down there and being able to come back at a U-turn to get access to that hotel for traffic that's coming from the south or from downriver is, um, is, is a good solution to get traffic in there safely. You're, you're running them through a controlled, signalized intersection at that point, rather than having an uncontrolled intersection or entrance out there mid-block.
The lane on Chestnut, how wide are those lanes there?
The lanes on Chestnut?
Yeah, with the request of the new yellow.
Looks like twelve and a half.
Yeah, it says twenty-five foot for both of them.
Twenty-five across both?
Yeah, so twelve and a half.
So they're gonna be twelve.
Yeah, they'll be twelve-foot lanes.
I'm good with it. The legal limit, I looked up, is twelve, so if we're at fourteen, I mean, it's gonna be enough.
I mean, that was part of what was discussed there, was just that there'd be enough room to be able to do that. And again, what's shown there with that fourteen-foot lane? It might be something slightly different than that when the final design comes out.
So you don't want any action tonight, you're just basically...
This is just to inform you of it, because I, I, this is a, just keeping this to two items is, is complicated enough, and we, we, we tentatively thought that this would, would be a good idea to do this, so that when the lease and the agreement came in front of you, that we could have you guys up to speed, at least is what was involved in it.
I, I'm not opposed to bringing the lease and the...
I'd like to see the agreements.
Yeah.
Okay, is that basically the general consensus here?
Alan?
No.
Bob?
Yes. Yes, I'm good.
Sounds like consensus is to take a look at it.
All right. Thank you, guys.
How, how soon can we have the agreements? The Tu- Tuesday?
Being, I'm not gonna write them. Andrew is. I don't, I'm not really sure I wanna commit him, but, I mean, part of what was discussed was getting it to you next council meeting, if at all possible. So, I mean, we want to do that just as quick as possible.
So do you anticipate going forward that there still may be some odds and ends changes on this?
Yes, but nothing that would change the scope of what I just talked to you about, how the traffic gets in, how the traffic circulates around, that there would be, need to be a special events plan. I mean, that is, that is, that is what we have all hit upon and basically nodded our heads on, as to something that we can all live with. So I don't see that, the concept changed. You know, maybe instead of a fourteen-foot lane, you'd end up with a fifteen-foot laner, instead of a four-foot median, you might have a five-and-a-half-foot median down through there. But little stuff, minor stuff, yes.
Was there discussion about actually, rather than do it, the, the U-turn in the intersection of having the turn lane and where they go into the underground garage, basically widen that hole to where they could come out? They could turn, what, fifty foot or a hundred foot or whatever before the intersection? If they're going to the hotel?
Just be able to turn right down through there for an entrance?
Turn left to go and from...
Go right in?
From your...
Yes, yes.
Plane, you could turn it. You didn't want that?
That was, that was definitely, that was definitely discussed.
It was discussed.
Yes. And didn't make the compromise list.
Well, it just, it, and, and I'm not a traffic engineer by any means, but it just seems like when you're, when you're directing people down to do that U, they're gonna do a U-turn, are they going to do it quick, like where your blue line indicates, or are they gonna go over, like they're going up Iowa and then cut back?
And are they gonna be holding up traffic, because there's traffic coming the other way?
Well, the, the signals will be new for the new Mississippi River Drive corridor, and it is our sincere hope that we'll incorporate that turning movement in those signals.
Turn signal.
Yes. Part of the objection, shall we say, to that, was that if you have that traffic queued up in that left turn lane, it's not the easiest thing in the world to do when you're sitting there and you got two cars in front of you to see what's coming through that intersection. And it's relatively close to traffic that would come around that corner on a right turn at the, at Pearlview. And it just seemed to us that it was just a little too close to that intersection to, to, to do that.
That's fair.
Okay.
Just, just...
Anything else?
That, signaling that intersection with Iowa Avenue, might be interesting to keep people that who are...
Yeah.
Doing the U-turn from cliding with people who are turning right off of Park Avenue, or off of Iowa Avenue.
Yes, and that has already been discussed, yes. That's part of, that's part of what the new signals would do, would keep that from becoming a right unread, so to speak. You'd wanna specifically prohibit that turn movement.
And I wonder what the chances people turning right off of Iowa Avenue would be to, instead of entering the proper lane, they'd enter the...
Hotel lane.
The hotel lane.
Yeah.
I would, I would, are you, are you talking the first person that turned right there once we opened it up, or after a while?
After a while.
Yeah. I, I, I think most people would learn, but I think that's entirely possible that somebody can make that mistake, because it is, the street will offset in there. There are dashed white lines that, you know, they use in large intersections that show what that turning movement is supposed to be, and that's already been discussed, is that one of the things that probably has to be there, to guide them a little farther out than what they might think they need to do.
Well, at least they, if they got in there in front of the old hotel, they could go a few feet and then take a left. Exit back out.
True. And, and I guess, I guess if you, if you, just to, just to say this, I mean, if they, if they did make that turning movement, and if they did come in in front of the hotel, you know, it's, it's not a disaster, they can just get out and go on around and take another shot at it.
That's much easier than the person that turned the, onto the one-way, going the wrong direction with their Mercedes the other day. Not a real good thing to back up, back into traffic.
It may not be important, but you, you can almost bet that close to a hundred percent of the people who are leaving the hotel parking areas will be coming down Iowa Avenue to that intersection, because no matter which way they wanna go, north or south, they gotta go through that intersection, or take a city street.
That's true, I mean...
Just leaving that parking deck area?
Leaving the parking deck, or the hotel, or whatever, they're gonna go around the entire block of Second Street and then come down Iowa Avenue, probably.
Well, they have the option of going straight out, second, straight out to Park Avenue.
Think they will?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Well, at least the south people won't.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Well, I'm sure, I mean, we're going to probably put some signage up there on the morrow when we first start this out, correct?
Yes, some temporary signage to start and some permanent signage that will try, that will direct traffic.
And there are always growing pains with changes.
Thank you, Jim, I'm sure you put a lot of time into this.
All right, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. All right, moving on the agenda, we're on the comments section. Bob, do you have anything to share tonight?
Nothing.
Scott?
Nothing.
Santos?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alan?
I don't know the details, but I'll just remind the people that Saturday, there's a Second Street celebration going on, so they might want to consider attending that.
Second Saturday, from Cedar to Pine. Phil, do you have anything to share tonight?
Nope.
Tom?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Steph?
One thing, the change to Second Street, if the weather's good, they're planning on doing the pavement markings overnight, Monday night, actually working late, doing the lines down the center and the other pavement markings. If it's going to rain Monday night, that might change, but we thought that would be less disruptive than trying to do it during the day on a weekday.
So are they going to run throughout the entire evening?
I talked to Randy Howell, and he was thinking it might be a shift from ten PM to seven AM.
I just think
But it's more than just lines down the middle.
Just thinking of the downtown residents that are having construction going on during their sleep time, but
Thank you, Nancy. I just had a couple of things. Our next council with the mayor, or coffee with the mayor, I'm sorry, is June twenty-fifth at nine o'clock, and we're going to have it at Fire Station Two in the fourth ward, Bob's Ward. And the next thing was at eight PM tonight, if any of you are not doing anything, if you could head on over to the Mississippi Brew for a lip sync battle to benefit the teen programming at the Y. They do a lot to teach the kids character development, hearing honesty, respect, and responsibility, so it's fun for a good cause. Thank you all for coming tonight.